And for the purpose of this meeting, I will recite the pledge and you can follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Toriani, is there anyone listed for good and welfare?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. And next we'll go into recognitions and announcements. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Rhode Island Urban Debate League, public debate conducted in cooperation with Roger Williams University School of Law, was presented last Thursday in both a Zoom meeting and live stream on their RIUDL website. The focus of the debate was whether school resource officers should remain assigned to schools. When Socket High School debaters Parker Penn and Esther Gomez argued on the negative side of the proposition and put up a spirited defense of the status quo with recommendations for improvement. A celebrity panel, including Secretary of State Nellie Gorbaya, the dean of Roger Williams University, and a member of the Rhode Island State Judiciary, gave the decision to the affirmative team from Blackstone Academy by a razor-thin margin. Congratulations to Parker and Esther and all the Wind Socket High School and Wind Socket area career and technical school debate team and their coach, Mr. Simonini, who continue to do proud despite the challenges of the COVID-19 environment. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have this evening.
I'd like to add my congratulations to the team and the coach, especially during these times. It's got to be kind of difficult to prep and to actually compete in debate during these COVID times. Is there anyone else that would like to add any comments to recognitions and announcements? Having none, I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the January 27, 2021 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any corrections, deletion, additions, amendments to the minutes?
You're good.
Thank you. Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. I'd like to take out of order the purchases and transfers so that we could discuss a couple of items. And I guess I'll turn this over to Mr. Perrier. I'd like to know more detail about the 209,000 that is being approved for the SROs and the $75,000 for the 100 licenses.
I can talk about the SROs first.
Sure.
That is the payment that we make to the city every year since we signed an SRO agreement. I believe that was two years ago now. That agreement, a portion of that is funded by a federal grant called the COPS grant, and the other portion of that, we provide the payment for. So we provide the city, the city provides us with a quarterly bill, and we pay the portion of the police officer salary that is due to the city that.
Now, Mr. Perrier, is that for the, is that for four of them at this point?
That is correct.
That's the full complement of SROs?
Yes, we have, we are currently, we have all four officers. It took a little while to get it filled, but we knew, we now do have those four officers, and they're working for us.
Yeah, because I believe last year, there were some like five cadets in training or officers in training, and the chief was low on his staff, and we were waiting for that turnaround. So it's nice to see that we've got all four. What is our, what is the amount that we pay? If we're paying out 209,000, what does the grant pay us? Or what do they cover?
It's about a 40/60 split right now. That's about what we're, what we're paying through. And just as a reminder, we have four years to spend this grant down, and on the fifth year, we'll have to own the officers 100%. So I still think we're, we're three fiscal years out on that. But we are, we are obligated to pay for officers in full for that fifth year, and that was, as a reminder, the school committee, one of the conditions of the grant.
Yep. It's one of, I think it's one of the best things that we have, is that we have our SROs. And how about the $75,000 JMF software? I think that's it. Software, yes.
Yes. I'd actually like to turn this over to Mr. Toriani to explain a little bit more about what the software purchase entails.
It's software that allows us to manage the iPads that we acquired for the teaching staff. We originally had budgeted and received the initial licensing, but we needed to get an additional 100 based on the package that we originally purchased. So we need to add 100 on. That allows us to, so many people think of technology as we can just install software remotely. This allows us to do that on the iPads. So if you were to call up and say you need an application, we could deploy it, and it would deploy remotely and automatically.
Okay, thank you. Any school committee member have any questions on the consent agenda? I guess the only time we have here is the purchases.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on your point?
Absolutely. Vice Chair Burke.
The 75,000, is any of that paid for by CARES Act money that we talked about before?
We've actually, we've actually finished off spending all of our CARES Act money. We spent the full $3.9 million, so this is going to be picked up through the local fund.
Okay. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to begin with the personnel. Going to report that the Wed has hired a full-time employee, one certified full-time employee preschool resource teacher, which is picked up by the local budget. We've also hired a PCA, which is a one-to-one at Coleman Elementary, and we have 19 stipend positions that we, we've added as well. And those stipend positions are coming out of Title I and Title III, which is ESL. Title I is free and reduced. Those 19 positions include before and after school support for our students. We received quite a bit of money through Title I for our staff to work with and support our students, especially throughout the pandemic, to provide supports that they might need as they're, you know, many of them may be experiencing some challenges and some difficulty. We've also hired some ESL study pals, which are our, our folks who work with our ELL students, both virtually and in person, for those who are on the, on the hybrid model. The next agenda item that I have is a school reopening update. I'm going to speak primarily to Wind Socket High School this evening. As you know, as you're aware, February 4th, I should say, our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders returned to Wind Socket High School on the hybrid model. We are just starting the process of thinking about what our high school graduation will look like in June. I've had some brief conversations with some of my colleagues, superintendents across the state, and most, many other districts are starting the process right now to see, you know, what that could look like. And it certainly, I'm sure it will probably vary from district to district. At this point, there aren't any other districts that have made any decisions as of yet. And here in Wind Socket, we're going to start that process of, of, you know, meeting with the high school and discussing what the, the possible scenarios could look like in June. The one thing we have going for ourselves this time is we have certainly more time to prepare, as last year, it, you know, came upon us pretty quickly, and there wasn't a lot of time to prepare. Although I will say that, yeah, I think the high school did a, did a great job putting together a modified graduation ceremony for our graduating teachers. And the positive this year is that we're going to have even more time to put that together. You know, I anticipate we'll probably look at a couple of different scenarios. One scenario being, you know, again, based on the, the Department of Health and the CDC guidance in terms of the number of people who are allowed to, to congregate, we might, you know, certainly put one contingency plan together where we would possibly have some type of, of an in-person graduation ceremony. And then we would also have a, a second plan if, if we can't do that. And if it would, you know, possibly look, look similar to what we did last year. But we're going to be starting that process very soon, and I will be providing updates to the committee and to the community at large about those plans as we start to, to talk about them. The, the last topic I'd like to address, specific to the high school, is, are the fields, Barry Field and Cass Park. And as, as you are aware, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, there, there is, there, there are, there are plans by the city to, you know, to move our athletic fields from Barry Field to Cass Park. I just want to go on the record here before the committee. And Mr. Henderson, our high school principal, and Ms. Giordano, our athletic director, are here as well this evening, and they, they can share some, some of their thoughts with the committee as well. But I want to just start off by saying, the, you know, the, the current rendition of, of what the fields will look like at Cass Park are, are not sufficient. The number of fields that we have currently at Barry Field, including playing fields and practice fields, there, there aren't enough, there is not enough space at Cass Park currently to fit all of those fields, you know, safely and comfortably at, at Cass Park. Though I know that we're, we're going to be continuing these conversations as a, as a committee as we move forward. But again, I just wanted to make it very, very clear to the committee that based on the current rendition, there, there's just not enough room, there's not enough space at, at Cass Park to, to fit in all of our, our athletic fields. And when I say athletic fields, you know, I'm, I'm including football, soccer, field hockey, baseball, softball, there, there's, there's not enough space based on the, the current rendition of, of Cass Park and, and what we currently have at, at Barry Field. I would ask Mr. Henderson and Ms. Giordano to, to add to that, to the, to my, my topic this evening, Mr. Henderson, if you, there's some things that you'd like to add to that as well.
Sure. Good evening, folks, and thank you for joining me on my phone. Unfortunately, I forgot my charger. Let me see if I can, there we go. I appreciate it. Yeah, just thought to add what Dr. McGee said. We also had the opportunity to visit Barry Field today. And just beyond the field space, in terms of just the overall space to house equipment, players, what a clubhouse brings to Barry Field, we don't have any of that space in, in the rendition that I saw. You know, once you get an opportunity to see the short video that was trying to put together to share with the community, you'll understand the, just the space that we have for the different sports, just to provide equal opportunity for all of the young boys and girls and, and just to house equipment. We definitely will not have the ability to house that equipment at high school. So that space will also have to be considered if anything is going to become a facility at Cass Park. Ms. Gi, is there anything else I missed that you would like to add?
I don't think so, Mr. Henderson. I think you hit everything.
Excuse me? Dr. McGee, may I ask Mr. Henderson a, a question?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak as well.
My question, my question is, if we can't fit all of the fields from Barry Field to Cass Park, but we can fit the football field and one practice field, if that were the only thing that we can do, what do you say to that plan? What, what would we need to do to make sure that the athletic program is intact and will continue as you see, as you both see fit? So assuming the rendering is what we get, football field and one practice field that's in that rendering, what do you say we do? Do we keep all of Barry Field and say the heck with Cass Park? Or how would you see it, at least from your opinion? How would you see it now?
In my opinion, I believe we're doing a disservice to our community and our student athletes. I, I, you know, as I tell folks, I grew up at Barry Field. As I walked into the clubhouse today, I know it needs a makeover, and so I would, would love a new facility. As I think I shared with some of you folks, I would love a Porsche, but I have a big family, so I need a Mini. So the Porsche is, the Porsche is me being selfish. The Mini is what I need. Say to that, when I walked into Barry Field just today, it made me realize just how we could accommodate boys and girls, coaches, officials, fans, and how are we going to do that in this space that's, that's been presented from what I've seen. Now, if there's some additional going to Cass Park that I haven't seen, I welcome that visual. However, from what I've seen, it doesn't come close to matching what, what is needed to bear necessity to be able to pull it off.
Mrs. Costa.
So. Um, so I, I just have a question. Have, have any of you guys have to, had to like, try to call the mayor at all to see exactly what her plans are or tried to talk to her at all? Because I was there at the unrevealing, and it did seem like there was a lot there to offer. And I feel like once we do this walkthrough, maybe we'll have a better understanding. And until we see actually what she has to offer and what it's going to bring, and what's going to be more, like, you know, not for nothing, you guys should know, if we're doing this for the youth and for our children, then if it's going to be more beneficial to them, maybe we should wait and see what the walkthrough brings before we have assumptions about what it could be. Because at the unrevealing, it showed a little bit more than a couple of fields like you're talking about. There was locker rooms.
No, there wasn't. There was no, there was no such thing. There was the football field. The, the renderings is what we're dealing with, is that those are falling short. That you don't have enough practice fields. There's one practice field, there's a football field, there's two track triangles, basically is what we see. And so that's why, I mean, we have not seen.
Right, but has anybody like physically tried to get in touch with the mayor or any of the mayor's associate people to try to see what the actual plans reveal for that? Or anybody in the city council to see exactly what we could do to bring this to the attention of it, if that's a concern? Is there, has anybody tried to do that?
Well, no, because this is the mayor's plan, and we would expect, since she never spoke to any of the school committee members or to the administration, we would hope that she would contact us. But there is a scheduled meeting, as you know, if you've read the email, that on March 8, we have a combined meeting. And at that point, we will discuss this. But right now, what we're hearing from Mr. Henderson, and he's the principal as well, and we have Ms. Giordano as the athletic director, and Dr. McGee, that the rendering that you and I and everyone saw on that day fall short. So that's where we are. So if that's the final plan, obviously, hopefully, this is a conceptual plan and more can be done. But right now, this is all.
Right. And like I said, you know, we have more questions to, you know, obviously asking more things to see.
Yeah. Who, who just asked?
That was, that was me, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Thank you. Mrs. Costa, to kind of answer your, your question a little, about, I would say, two and a half, three years ago, when, when the, the rendering was, was first revealed, Mr. Henderson and Ms. Giordano and myself actually did sit down with some, and I believe they were landscape architects that, that the, the city had sent over to meet with us. And I can remember sitting with them, there was, there were two gentlemen. We sat at the, at the high school, and they showed us the rendering. And at the time, we told them that the rendering that they had would not be sufficient to fit all of the fields in. So, so we, we made that clear at least two and a half years ago.
But for two and a half years, we haven't heard. Any, any other questions for Mr. Henderson and Ms. Giordano before Dr. McGee continues with his report? Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my third and final agenda item is an update on the contract negotiations with respect to the school department. So we've met, our, when I say we, I mean, myself, administrators, building-level administrators, as well as district-level administrators have met with Ms. Rapport, our, our legal counsel, and who was our, will be our lead negotiator. We've met approximately three times to establish our proposals for the, for the negotiating team. And we're scheduled to meet another time next Thursday, February 18. So it's our hope that on the 18th or soon thereafter, we will have put together and, and had an opportunity for our team to discuss our proposals, which will then be put together in a, in a, in a formal document by Attorney Rapport, which will then be presented to our negotiating team prior to the, the negotiations with the, with Teachers Guild beginning. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we will be finishing up our part next week and that we can get then that, that finished product to the, to our negotiating team so that we can start the negotiations as early in March as possible. And with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee.
I'd love to answer them.
Any, any further questions for Dr. McGee, Mr. Henderson, or Ms. Giordano?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. I want to go back to the personnel matters. Just, just a logistic question. All those teachers that are listed as before and after-school support teachers, how are they meeting with the students? Is it all virtual? Is it in person? I mean, if the students are in person by hybrid? I wasn't sure how that was explained. Are they meeting? And how are they meeting with the students?
So it's a combination, Mr. Burke. Some that can meet in person will meet in person with very, obviously very small groups, and others will be meeting with students virtually.
Who decides that?
I believe that is decided between the, between Dr. Holt's office, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Holt's office and, and yet I, and Mrs. DiRiso, our Director of Literacy in Title I, and the principals and, and the teachers. So I think what, what they're doing is when they, when they establish that, they, they establish the needs of the students. I, I know that best-case scenario is that they meet in person with them. That's not unfortunately always possible, because you can, you know, you can, you're limited to the, with the number of students that you can meet with in person after school. Unfortunately, meeting with them virtually, or fortunately, meeting with them virtually, you can have, you know, a larger group of students that can receive that, that support before and after school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on, and file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. We'll start with health and wellness. Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Committee met on Monday, February 1 at 4 o'clock after a long, lengthy absence. We haven't been able to meet last year, and finally we were able to get together on February 1, Monday. I, I introduced Mrs. Costa, who is now a member of the Health and Wellness Committee. I also introduced and welcomed, for the first time, Mr. Ashley Plant, who is the Director of SEDEXO for the schools of Wind Socket.
Nice.
After the introductions, we talked about the three main areas of concern for the Health and Wellness Committee, and that is nutrition, physical activity, and mental health. For nutrition, we talked to Mrs. Plant about how SEDEXO is providing the food services to our students. All students are provided breakfast, all students are provided lunch. We also provide meals on Tuesdays and Fridays, I believe she stated, for those students who are staying at home, who are doing remote, that we're able to provide sufficient food, we believe, for all our students, whether they're in person or remote. So that was good to hear. The programs in the school are generally grab and go. They brought into the classroom, and it seems to be that everybody was on board that, that these programs are working, because we also had some principals from the elementary schools on board. We talked about physical activity, and obviously, the gym teachers are, are still running their programs for the students in school. They're also running their programs online for the students that are at home. So, so there still is a tension now of the physical activity. The concern that we have is because of the pandemic, we had so many programs going on in our, in our elementary schools. We had Girls on the Run. We had the Rebox program in every elementary school. We had recess rocks going on. And unfortunately, because of the pandemic, a lot of these programs have gone by the boards. And hopefully, when it comes September, if the world's in a better place, we can bring them right back. We then finally talked about the issue of mental health. We spoke to Project Oea, and also some of the nurses that were in attendance. And, and, you know, just to underscore our concern always with the mental health of students as well as their academic education. We also heard from Karen Wetherall, who spoke for the Rhode Island Healthy School Coalition, and talked about many of the programs. And we also have a program too, that, that's what I was trying to think of, from URI. And, and the person from that program also talked to us how they were very involved last year, and obviously because of the pandemic, they have not been, but they will try and bring it back. And finally, our next meeting will be March 8 at 4 o'clock. And I believe that covers our discussion for the Health and Wellness Committee on February 1.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Any member have any questions or comments for, for Vice Chair Burke? Having none, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kepiscus. Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll, we'll turn to the Policy Committee Subcommittee Update. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke.
Mr. Burke, shall I proceed as usual?
Please, I'm out of breath right now, so please continue. Please, I'm out of breath right now, so please continue.
I understand. The Policy Subcommittee met on January 28th of 2021. We discussed two policies. One is the Cybersecurity Procedure Policy. This policy is based on a draft policy from our insurer. The trust was requiring that all insureds adopt a policy meeting certain parameters meant to address theft of personal confidential information. Under Rhode Island law, any entity that collects information is required to take certain precautions to safeguard that information. This includes schools. Therefore, we're responsible to have certain safeguards in place to protect certain types of personal information. The trust wanted to incorporate the types of materials defined in the Rhode Island statute and the Massachusetts statute. But the Subcommittee decided to stick to the information protected by the Rhode Island statute as per council. That is all that's required of us. The reasoning is that including a broader definition of information might seem that we're agreeing to protect through our policy. Expanding the amount of information agreeing to protect makes the job of protecting it more difficult. There is no reason for us to be to protect more information than we're required to by law. The policy sets out the security procedures at a high level, that is, setting out rules and requirements as well as required reactions to a breach. This leaves it to the Chief Operational Officer to develop their own detailed procedures without having to return to the school committee to the changes, should changes be required going forward. Council recommended the district collect as low as personal information as we can, limited to only what we're required to collect to reduce the opportunities for breach. The policy takes its reference from the Rhode Island statute regarding identity theft, which requires and other things, the training of all staff who access personal information on how to keep it secure. The training will be built into our regular training on district policy. Although the statute does not dictate who provides the training, it will likely be done by the Chief Operational Officer or his or her designee. Different groups require different levels of training based on their level of access. And that training is not detailed in the policy, so it's to permit flexibility to the creation of district procedures. In short, broad policy-specific procedures, as we usually try to do, to avoid returning to the committee for any changes. Our Human Resources Director detailed all of the procedures HR currently has in place to protect employee personal information, which clearly meets the current requirements of this policy. The policy is already reviewed by an outside organization at the direction of Chairman Borger. Filling to pass this policy will affect our insurability in the eyes of our insurer, the trust, which may deny coverage if this policy is not in place. This policy is particularly important these days when staff are accessing such information via cellular devices for their own computers due to remote learning and working. It is agreed that the policy would be sent to the full committee for its review with this suggestion that it be passed without the Massachusetts statutory language. That policy is before you tonight as item number two on business. The second policy we discuss is the Child Abuse Network Policy. This is a policy amendment that's mandated by statutory changes. Among the changes are the expansion of the requirement of mandated reporting. An issue was raised by the proposed policy, which required a teacher to report suspected cases to the building principal, with the building principal being the mandated reporter to police or DCYF. Subcommittee preferred that the teacher also be mandated as a reporter to DCYF and the principal so that all of them report. They all should call together, but we rather everyone call than anyone assuming someone else called and no one actually calls. We think this is what's required by Rhode Island law where all adults are mandated reporters. The draft policy will be amended to reflect this change and brought back before policy our next meeting, which is scheduled on February 25th, 2021. At 3:30, we're meeting a little earlier due to purim. We want to make sure it concludes before sundown. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiskas. Anyone have any comments or questions for Mrs. Kepiskas or Vice Chair Burke? Then I'll make a motion to receive, place on file the policy update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, we'll go into CLAC update, and I'll ask Mrs. Kepiskas to give us that update.
It's me again. CLAC last met on Thursday, February 4th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We met virtually, as we have been doing since March. Under Old Business, we discussed the suspension of all parent support group meetings until the pandemic is concluded. We also talked about and reviewed the reopening of schools. The focus of the work on the high school, as all 12 had then returned in the hybrid model. As of the day prior, things had gone smoothly. There were approximately 200 students each day. This may have been affected by the snow that we had. Some students have qualified, have elected to return for four or five days in person. Those were departmental students. There's also been a change in the dismissal time at the high school, which will remain while we remain in hybrid mode. The changes were made as a result of both staff and student agreement or discussion. Advisory now occurs every morning rather than on a form on our former rotating schedule to address the social and emotional needs of our students. As a result of problems with coverage for our traditional lunch periods and also the unavailability of the cafeteria for lunch. Lunch was moved to the end of the day, with students getting a grab and go lunch at dismissal at 1:20. There were some busing-related issues, but these were, we're told, would be resolved by Mr. Henderson by weeks in. And they did receive a notification that they have been resolved. There have been requests from parents of students with IEPs who have been asking to return four days after having elected for distance learning initially. The students who are considered are considered to be the most at risk and are being put into classrooms based on feasibility. That is, in terms of the classroom size and the coverage. The special education is included in all of those discussions as the district LEA for the individual schools. We reviewed the status of IEPs and evaluations. It was indicated that they're still catching up. Alternate assessment is the most difficult, as they must be done in person, and these are time-consuming. There were 66 referrals from the elementary level, which have been completed. With the out-of-district schools, they are still trying to make up. They're getting there. All reported attendance at virtual IEP meetings has been very good. We discussed the issue of truancy. Although truancy and family courts still have a place in the system, the first line of offense with us at virtual learning is for principals to send out social workers to see if there are issues at home for students who are not showing up. Perhaps there are issues we can help with, such as non-assessibility, non-functional Chromebooks, language issues, et cetera. If parents cannot be reached, or if they have been reached, but students remain absent, the recommendation to truancy is still occurring. On to new business, Betty Dion, our referred to as beloved guidance counselor at the Witsocket High School, was named as the official transition coordinator for our district students, a job that she has been doing unofficially for many years. She was recognized for her vast special education experience and dedication to our students. There were two issues on the agenda that were requested by a special education parent who did not attend the meeting to flesh them out, and they were referred to either the special ed director or assistant ed director to follow up regarding their questions. A presentation by the Witsocket High School Transition Classist was put on hold due to change in services that they were providing at the high school. Dr. McGee gave his announcements, which focused primarily on Berryfield and Cass Park. Dr. Sullivan, the special ed director, announces Steve Robideau at the high school, was reaching out to all alternate assessment parents, families at the high school to see if there was enough interest in a presentation in our district by BHDDH, Behavioral Health Developmental Disabilities and Hospitals from the state of Rhode Island. They can provide additional parent training if there is sufficient interest. Dr. Sullivan also reported the district has been invited to participate in DLM training intended to help create a national model for alternate assessment students. Only in-person students will take part. Distance learners are not required to participate in alternate assessment assessments, that's DLM. But if distance learners want to participate, they can reach the school and attempt to make plans so that all who choose to participate, because less participation hurts the district. So the classroom teachers are reaching out to families to determine the interest of distance learning students to participate. School Committee Liaison is me, and since I was acting as chair, I defer to Chairman Borger, who was all. And he spoke about his concerns, as well as those of the school committee, about the proposals around Berryfield and Cass Park. He inquired about staffing of nurses in one-to-ones. Dr. McGee reported that all school nurses have been vaccinated. And the Witsocket Education Department had given the fire department a list of staff members who are in schools and are considered compromised in an effort to provide some sort of priority in the vaccine. But WED has not heard back as of yet. Dr. Sullivan advised all in-school students who need a one-to-one to have their one-to-one. As has been necessary, the department has been moving people from class to class and school to school as much as avoiding movement as much as we possibly can to provide the necessary coverage. And we're also hiring for new positions. There were no member comments. And the next meeting of this is scheduled Thursday, March 4th, 2021, at 6:00 PM virtually. And if you want an invite, send me an email at my school committee email, and I'll be happy to add you to the list.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiskas. I I want to recommend to all listeners, it's if if you have folks that you know within our district who have a special education student or parents that have special education students are concerned, they should try to attend the CLAC meetings, usually the first Thursday of the month. We're holding them at Zoom, and it makes a lot of sense for this committee to be on a Zoom call because a lot of parents that have special education children, it's very difficult for them to come to the meetings. And so it's been very successful. We've had quite a bit, a pretty good attendance at these meetings. But I recommend CLAC to all parents and families who have special education students to bring up your concerns, your questions. If you need help, you'll get it. So again, I I thank you, Mrs. Kepiskas, and the entire CLAC committee for being so diligent all these years to taking care of our special ed kids. Anyone else have any comments or questions for Mrs. Kepiskas? Then I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the CLAC update. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Costa, and I read Vice Chair Burke's lips. He said, second. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
And last but not least, we will have the curriculum update, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kepiskas. You're doing such a great job tonight, Lynn. One more time, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I assume you would prefer I give the report?
Absolutely.
Okay. This is, I I have to emphasize this thing, as I always do. This is the commit I struggle with the most because I don't understand the lingos, so I'll do the best that I can based on what I have. The Curriculum Subcommittee met yesterday, 2/9/2021. The first item on our agenda, other than minutes, was the transition to ninth-grade academies. This proposes a new program, which is intended to provide initial support to ninth graders moving up to the high school using a team approach, much like the approach used currently at the middle schools. The plan is to provide a more personalized program to help ease them into the high school routine and expectations. The plan is that this will also permit the high school to decrease ninth-grade failure rates, increase attendance, and better track discipline reports. Measures for success will be determined and used to evaluate the effectiveness of this approach, but research supports this model. There was a lot more provided as to exactly how this would work. I'll spare you details because it's probably going to come before the school committee at some point. The next was one that also excited me very much. The Witsocket Education Department has filed a pre-application for the bilingual dual-language program for purposes of excellent development of a two-way immersion program model with a focus on Spanish and English based on the statistics of our district. We need to recognize that native language can be used as an asset rather than a deficit. The plan is that all participating students will become bilingual and would be eligible for a bilingual seal on their high school diploma. Research supports bilingual education, that all students show better academic performance, higher literacy in both languages, cognitive benefits, improvements in self-esteem, and engagement, as well as instruction in other cultures. We hope to see a better graduation rate, lower dropout rate, and better retention rates. The need for this program is evidenced by Witsocket Education Department's MLL's population performance on the RICAS, which shows 97.1% of our MLL students are not proficient in ELA. That means that 2.9% of our MLL students are partially proficient or higher, showing that we need to look at other options. The plan is to begin school year 2021, 2022 with a one-to-two pre-K classrooms led by a bilingual teacher. We asked about staff and were told we already have one bilingual teacher. And our MLL director has her ear to the ground and spies at Rick, who are scouting out for the other bilingual teachers for us. The program will continue to roll out year after year with the intent that all the grades will be involved by school year 2029, 2030. The next is a special ed initiative, essentially, which is a transition to the integrated model at Vernon and Coleman. You may remember this is something that we had talked about last year. But unfortunately, due to budgetary constraints, it was a program that was not looked on positively. This year, the plan is to place more special education students, the whole plan to begin with, was to place more special education students in general education classrooms, taking them out of the self-contained models, with a special education teacher and a resource teacher available to push into the classroom and pull students out in small groups, so as to provide the necessary supports for these students to be successful. The integrated model places our students into the least restrictive model, gen ed classroom, for all of their school day, including lunch and itinerants, to help the students feel more included while providing them with the support they need. It also puts a resource teacher in the room to potentially assist non-IEP students who might also need additional supports. At this point, it will require only the adding of two full-time positions, which is better than we were suggested the last time, a paraprofessional and a social worker, both of whom will have billable hours through Medicaid to help fund the positions. The focus is on Vernon Elementary and Coleman Elementary for this program as they are both comprehensive schools under RICAS star reports. The next was a discussion of Professional Learning Communities, or PLC, successes. I will freely admit, I really got lost in this because it's very edu-language based, but I'll do my best. The Witsocket Education Department has purchased a program called Goalbook, which is demonstrating to be a very useful tool in bringing curriculum to our varied student population. Goalbook designs learning experience and instructional techniques to achieve specific learning goals. It is a student-oriented model intended to teach students responsibility by teaching our students how to be critical thinkers and by teaching them how to identify goals and get past obstacles. A demonstration provided of how Goalbook does this through the use of the Grade 3 standard for explanatory writing. Goalbook currently goes from grades K through 5 and is currently in classrooms in two elementary schools. Again, Vernon and Coleman, they're comprehensive. It can also provide pathways for gen ed students and toolkits for special ed students with greater needs. The toolkit is also helpful in that it provides progress monitoring, which helps in the writing of IEP goals. In short, who spoke to us? Heather Neal and, oh, shoot me. Jessica? Jessica, thank you. We're very excited about this platform because it's a platform that finally does exactly what you were promised it was going to do. I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Nato. Then last item on the agenda was a late addition, it's the Witsocket Middle School's grading policy. I'll give you a little preview because it's probably going to come before us. The principals at the middle school have had conversations with the administration about the potential need to make minor adjustments to the middle school grading policy. That is, they want to be able to substitute an I for incomplete for the standard grade of 50 in student in all the work that is from them. The real concern is for students to go back, do the work they've missed, and submit that work for full credit so that students can be more successful. Some of us expressed concerns that this would give unmotivated students an out. The principals indicated that the incomplete grade would be the exception rather than the rule. The decision to give it would be made on a case-by-case basis. One of the principals explained that since the program already had this opportunity, the suggestion is made so that, so as to give as many as we can the opportunity to pass because right now, the numbers are concerning. Some wondered whether this sends the wrong message. Some suggested that perhaps a hard and fast deadline by which work should be, would be submitted should be part of any changes to the policy. We must balance this suggestion against the fact that we simply cannot support, for example, repeat 100 seventh graders through the staffing and space concerns. All levels of the district are experiencing this problem in distance learning. And it likely is the pandemic combined with parental apathy or fatigue or both. The Witsocket Education Department wants to bring this temporary policy change directly to the school community for its consideration. And I mentioned it to you tonight, so you can be prepared to listen and formulate your questions. The next meeting of the Curriculum Subcommittee is on March 9th, 2021, at 2:00 PM virtually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiskas. Does anyone have any questions or comments for her with regards to curriculum? Vice Chair Burke, you're muted. Vice Chair Burke, you're muted.
I have a question about that ninth grade program that is now being discussed. Don't we have some program already in place to help the ninth grade students transition into the high school? Be concerned about their academics, be concerned about their potential careers? Is this is this going to replace the fact that the ninth grade program was put together by Mr. Henderson and his staff and it was an award-winning program? So is this supplemented or changed? I wasn't sure. That's my question.
So I can answer that, Mr. Burke.
Yes.
So it it would really supplement it. The the program that you're referring to is a success 101, which which has been very successful for our our freshman students. What we're talking about now is is establishing beyond that, a much more personalized environment for them, which would be very similar to what we're doing at the middle school with teams. So there would be a a ninth grade, there would be ninth grade teams where there would be specific teachers who would be would be working with exclusively with the ninth graders. So it's it's much more than that than that success 101. Success 101 would still be a part of their curriculum. But this would be just in addition to that, Mr. Burke.
Okay, I always thought success 101 had teachers meeting with students daily. So so now we're going to have further meetings with students by different teachers or the same teachers?
So it it would it would be teachers who would be so so the ninth graders would be.
No, so can I can I jump in, Dr. McGee, if you don't mind?
Sure, Mr. Henderson.
We lost you.
You're back.
I think.
I can, I'll continue and then when.
Okay, there he is. He kind of keeps breaking up on me or not, but just speak to him, Mr. Mr. Burke. Can you hear me now?
Yep, yes.
Can you hear me?
You froze.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
No.
We can hear you.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but you keep freezing up, but yes.
I can't hear you now.
Please, I'm I'm not criticizing this new program. I just thought it sounded to be duplication, that's all.
Okay, perfect. So just to about now. Perfect. Okay, perfect. So just piggyback with Dr. McGee was saying the success 101 program. So I'll just turn my camera off and then maybe you can hear me.
Okay.
As long as you can hear me, that's the most important thing.
Agreed.
I hate that I can't. How about now? Can anyone hear me?
Just keep going.
No.
I know the feeling.
Yes, you do.
I know the feeling. I'll continue, Mr. Burke, and then when Mr. Henderson, if if Mr. Henderson can join us, then I'll I'll hand it over to him. But but yeah, so they're in the process of putting together what would be what would be teams, ninth grade teams, which is very similar to what we have at the middle school. So you would have 100 or so students in the ninth grade that would 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 comprise a team. And there would be, you know, four core teachers that would be teaching those students. And then we would have other other teams. So with the based on the numbers that we're projecting for next year is we'd have approximately four ninth grade teams. And those students would be following one another, much like our students at the middle school do. So the the main difference between the the ninth grade projected teams and and the the current freshman schedule is that currently freshmen, they're they're they they go to multiple classes and they don't travel with the same group per se, unless, you know, they're they're in the same class. This would be different. This would be those groups that would be traveling together and which would would establish those personalized teams like we have at the at the middle school. So in addition to the success 101, which those those ninth grade teachers would still be teaching the success 101, that would be one that 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 schedule wouldn't change for our freshmen. The only the thing that would change is that they would be with a a group of of students that they would be following throughout the day as as the model at the middle school currently is.
Okay.
And Mr. Henderson, I think, is he is he, are you back?
I hope I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. I don't know what Dr. McGee said. However, what I'm going to say is I think he alluded to it. Our success 101 teachers was a collaboration of teachers across all disciplines. So just allows us to still cohort those teachers by teaming. However, that success 101 will still exist within their teams. It would it would just fine tune it more to that they're just in more much more a concrete cohort as they as they navigate through space, which will allow different teachers to have the opportunities to have more conversations about about similar students. I hope that's something that you said, Pat.
Yes, he did, actually.
Perfect.
One final follow-up and then I'm done. Does this change students leveling? Are they all now leveled at the same level? There's no leveling in ninth grade now?
No, so that won't it won't change that.
It won't change that, okay.
No, no.
Okay.
We'll still have the levels, we'll still be leveled within a different teaming approach. Oh, okay. So we have to make sure we're very strategic about what we're creating.
Okay. Sounds like you've just changed the way you deal the cards by different groups, but the same program is being run, is being given to the students.
And and as you know, Pat mentioned it. Dr. McGee mentioned a different rationales why we want to do this. But at the end of the day, we still just want to continue to find a way to support ours as they transition from the eighth to the ninth grade. So some of those things are keeping similar, right? And that's that cohesive grouping. So the other thing he already spoke on, so I I apologize for breaking up together all night and I don't know what happened. My apologies.
It's called a McGee flow.
Yeah, it's not pleasant.
No, it's not. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Dr. McGee or Mr. Henderson? Then I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the curriculum update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions and I'll ask Mr. Notorianni to give us the technology facilities update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this evening's update does not contain any statistics out of the work order system. I had some technical difficulties of my own, so it's just going to be a brief summary. So that being said, the technology department is in the process of completing the delivery of the remaining faculty staff equipment. I believe we presently have about 20 devices left to deliver. And our work order system, while I couldn't produce the reports, we are at 41. So if you recall, at various points in time, we were in the hundreds and then overall, we probably had several thousand work orders. So we're in pretty good shape with work orders in terms of technology. The upcoming projects will be providing support and assistance for state assessments. And our data and state reporting is focused, as I said at the last meeting, on the snap, the March 1 snapshot enrollment report, which impacts our funding. In terms of facilities, our facilities and custodial staff have been quite busy making sure that the ice and snow has been removed around the buildings. It's been a daunting task because we're backfilling our custodial staff with facilities workers to make sure the buildings are remaining clean due to COVID. And at the same time, they are getting out and cleaning the parking lots with the various storms we had over the last couple of weeks. And we're actively planning for potential facilities projects for April, May and June, which I will be discussing further at the facility subcommittee meeting on February 22nd, I believe. That concludes my report this evening, Chairman.
Any questions for Mr. Notorianni? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke. Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into new business. The first item in closed session, we discussed the the non-renewal for the of the employment of certain probationary teachers and here we're just here for a vote to non-renew those those employees. Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next item, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the information, privacy and security policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. I'll turn it over, I guess, to Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Kepiscus. Is there any more that we need to discuss on this policy?
I don't believe so unless you believe we need to add something, Mr. Burke. That's why I tried to make it as detailed in my report as possible.
I I think you explained everything that we need to know about it.
I think it's very important for us to do that. So any 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 other members of the school committee have any questions regarding this policy? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Third item next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the variance request stage two submission to wide. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Perier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee this evening, this is a a variance request for our five-year capital planning process to bring the school committee members who are new here up to speed. The five-year capital planning process is a process we go through usually every five years, sometimes a little faster, depending on how quickly we spend through our plan. This is a process that we go through with the Department of Education and we put together a list of improvements that we want around the district in regards to building improvements. So either envelope building improvements like roofs, boilers or class 21st century classroom improvements. So our five-year capital plan was up, but due to COVID, much like some other things, the planning got pushed back. And this is just an extent of the time that we need to turn in the five-year capital plan. It was slated for May 15th and we thought it would be in the best interest of the school department to seek that extension to September 15th. Many other districts have done this as well. And the extra time would prove helpful for us to put together a good five-year capital plan with the Department of Education.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Perier? Then I'll make a motion. Then Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
The last item on our agenda is a discussion of Barry Field and Cass Park and athletic fields. There is, we're not taking a vote on this. It's a matter of discussion. As you, we all have received you received an email letting us know that the city council would like to have a meeting with the school committee to discuss the uses of Barry Field and the development of Cass Park. The only thing we, anyone's received are the two renderings that we received some time ago. Now, the reason I put this on on the agenda tonight is that the the city council would like to know where does this, where does the school committee stand with regards to both issues that are very separate? The development of Cass Park, as the mayor has said, is very independent of the a potential or a desired sale or lease of Barry Field. And then, so that is separate from the actual dealing with Barry Field, which is basically under a deed restriction when the city bought the the property in 1925. This has been standing there for 95 years. It is, the the two items are separate. So the city council would like to at least at that meeting gather, what say you, basically, school committee? And the way, you know, and I'd like for each one of us to, we can express our opinions, doesn't mean it they're going to change. They certainly can because as Mr. Henderson and Dr. McGee have said, look, what we see now may looks inadequate with regards to Cass Park and frequently, that's the linchpin of this whole project. Can can a new rendering, can because of discussion, a new plan that that would allow the city to fit and develop Cass Park to fit all the fields and the practice fields, the the playing fields in that area? Right now, we don't know. So unfortunately, if you've read the paper and you've listened to radio and whatever discussions you may have heard, you might have garnered that it appears, at least appears, that the administration is trying to link both projects. We're going to try to, we hope that we can override the restrictions of the deed and then sell and sell Barry Field, use the proceeds for the development of Cass Park. And I I at this point, all I can say is from my own personal opinion that unless you can fit all the fields at Cass Park and that you can fund it and make sure it happens, that we're not dealing with ledge and we can fit all the fields, then the athletic department has to keep Barry Field as its athletic complex. It's not just a field of 22 acres. There's, you know, there's there's, we have various teams, boys and girls, with soccer, football, field hockey, that would be that use that field throughout throughout the week, throughout the months. And we have a clubhouse, as Mr. Henderson spoke about, that we actually have to have. You know, when I go to Barry Field, I thought I was parking in front of a garage. I was parking in front of a clubhouse. I didn't even know it. I would walk into the field and go and attend graduation, or I would go and attend and watch a game. I didn't realize all the activities that occur at Barry Field. It was an education for me to learn about all the use that those fields are put through on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, and that we we transport our kids, our students there. So as far as I'm concerned, I got to hear more about the development. Right now, if we if 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 I'm hearing from the administration that we can't fit the fields, as I'm concerned, we don't move. And even if we have to, we can fit it all. It doesn't mean that we should sell Barry Field. We should get rid of that land. Because that land under deed is restricted to the use of the use is limited to playgrounds and athletic fields under the management of the school committee. So right now, if you are. So right now, if you, if the city council asks me, what do you think, Paul? I'd say, no, I don't want one, I want to hear more about what are you going to do with Cass Park and how that's going to work. And secondly, I don't, and I don't want to relinquish that deed. I don't want to relinquish the restrictions on our management responsibility over those fields. Because the one thing that the city has, it has plenty of parks, but it doesn't have much open land. You may recall that not too long ago, we closed down the Fifth Avenue School and the Second Avenue School. And frankly, when we had the moldy shoes at the Caris Center, we might have needed a building. We had none, we had none. So we had a lot of, there was a lot of, you know, we had to bring a lot of students into the high school, into the library, wherever they, they put them. But we didn't have any extra buildings. But will we need, will we ever need those fields? So as far as I'm concerned, I say no. But everyone has their own opinion and that's what I'm looking for. That's what I'd like to make sure that we all voice our opinions. So I'll ask Vice Chair Burke.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My statement will be quick and to the point. The main purpose of a school committee, the main mission of a school committee that we all agree to is to support and enhance the education of the students in our district, period. Barry Field for the last several decades has supported the education of our students in our district. In 2021, I don't think we have yet determined how else we can continue to support the education of the students in our district. And for that purpose, I see no, I, I would never vote to sell Barry Field because I think it goes against mission of who we are as school committee members. That's how I feel. That's it.
That's very concise and right to the point. I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus. What say you?
I think that if this were to work at all, the only way it works is as two separate projects. Barry Field remains 100% intact as an athletic complex until such time as Cass Park is developed, overcomes all of its hurdles in order to become an equally or better serving athletic facility. And then and only then can we look at potentially agreeing to a removal of the restrictions at Barry Field. I also think that all this banding about of moving the restrictions from Barry to Cass is potentially a problem because I don't see how land owned by the city can, how the city can grant a restriction on land already owned by the city. Because then the city, as the grantor, has the capacity to remove that restriction at any time. I want to see some more work with regard to Cass Park. I don't see any engineering. I see conceptual designs. We need engineering. We don't know if anybody's reached out to DEM because there's water in the middle of that park, this pond. And they keep talking about this gravel at Cass Park and could it be that the gravel is there because the park has water running through it and the gravel prevents erosion? We don't know any of that. There's too many unanswered questions to actually even really formulate a concise opinion. But I think we can't do anything with Cass, we can't do anything with Barry, excuse me, until we know what's going to go on with Cass. You can't put the cart before the horse. That's my position and I, I'm going to steal Mr. Henderson's thunder. Need a, need a maybe not a two-seater Porsche as much as we'd like the two-seater Porsche.
Mr. Leclerc. Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Mr. Leclerc, what do you think?
From what I gather and from what I know of, we haven't been approached by anybody as far as the land is concerned. No one's made any mention to talking about us, no one's come to talk to us, given us any information. So what we're working on is just conjecture by the, by the administration. And also, the people that make that best decision are the school administrators, Mr. McGee, Mr. Henderson, Mrs. G. They've made their recommendations. I'm going to go with their recommendation, so I don't see any reason to sell.
Short and sweet. Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Mrs. Costa.
I guess my opinion's a little bit different. I mean, I'm, I'm really honestly, if we can make it work and we can get the fields that we need, I'm honestly all for it because, you know, the practices, honestly, if you think about it now, at Barry Field, we need to have transportation and that does hinder some of our athletes. Some of our parents are not okay with having to provide transportation or just can't provide transportation to Barry Field for practices because of, you know, them being at work and stuff like that. So I feel as though if we do get this new athletic complex with all of our questions that we have that are still unanswered and we can get fair answers to them and we could make this work as a team, I feel as though we should try it and bring something new into the city of One Socket. And it'll also, if we make this athletic complex work, it'll also give kids in the city opportunities because it's not like, oh, you can't come and play on this field because it's only for the sports people. No, it's also going to be for the children in One Socket that don't have much to do. They can go to these fields, they can go and play, they can have fun like they do now at World War II Memorial State Park, like she did with that basketball. There's already a softball field there and there's already a basketball field at Cass Park. And if we can inquire and get our questions answered and make it work, I definitely think that I'm for it.
Y'all, let me understand, Mrs. Costa, are you saying you're for the sale of Barry Field? If, if, if all the fields can be moved to, to a satisfactory conclusion at Cass Park?
I, I definitely think I would lean for it, absolutely. And if we can make revenue from Barry Field for the city of One Socket, absolutely. I don't see why we wouldn't want to see that happen if we can make all of Cass Park what we need it to be and our athletics get the best of the best. Because honestly, athletes do deserve that and especially upcoming athletes. It could bring more scouts to our athletic department. It could potentially bring more revenue to our, our sports departments as well. We could see more people wanting and more students wanting to transfer over into One Socket because they want to be a part of that. So I feel as though, yeah, there are a lot of opportunities that we're looking past as well and we're kind of focusing a lot of negativity instead of positivity.
I, I hear you. I, I, I thank you for, for that opinion. I will say that the, the other four members are not negative. What we're looking at is can, we would all love to see Barry Field, Cass Park develop into a phenomenal athletic complex that serves all the needs of the school department. That means all the playing fields, all the practice fields that are needed, that if that occurred, if they can develop, that were, you could twinkle your nose or wave a wand or however the engineers do it and they could do this, then Cass Park would be, would be fantastic. That's the show me part because this could be a very expensive project, this could be almost an impossible project for some of the things we're talking about. You know, folks in the city are saying, if you can move all the fields over, let's develop Cass Park. We all agree with that. It's a matter of what we do, what, what can be done, what will be done. And that will be discussed, I would think, at the March 8th meeting. Because the city council will not, are not planning to act if at the end of the day, we're not willing to sell Barry Field because we still may need it for the needs of the, of the students because Cass Park may not be able to be developed. Let's look at it from that end. If that can be developed, it's, it's, still, there may not be an appetite in this school committee to sell Barry Field.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In regards to that, you know, it's, it's, I don't, I feel like, you know, we're missing the part, you know, where the mayor didn't say at that rendering that the gravel would definitely pay for it. And yes, you are saying like you haven't heard anything more about that, but again, you know, hopefully this meeting with the city council will answer a little bit more of our questions that we do have with that. Because if we don't need Barry Field to go forth with Cass Park, I don't understand what the hesitation is for the fields. If we can get what we're looking for, if all the practice fields can be there and, you know, and we can work together as a team for that and then Barry Field is its own separate problem or issue when we get there.
It'll be interesting, Mrs. Costa, if there's enough gravel that could be sold and it will generate enough money to pay for the, the development at Cass Park and hopefully there is no ledge, we would hope and pray there's no ledge under that dirt, that there'd be no obstacle and that the, and that the price tag for this whole complex can be met by the city and by, and by whatever sources of, of revenue or income that we've got to generate.
Right.
First step is to see where we go, but at least we know that, you know, right now, this committee as a whole does not have an appetite to sell Barry Field outright, does not have an appetite to get rid of the restrictions outright. When I sit, I say, let's do it. Done.
We got a, we got a lawyer too, to, you know, to see what that restrictions inquire. So, you know, and I'm not saying, okay, let's up and do it and let's sell Barry Field. What I'm saying is if that's a whole separate issue in this gravel.
Mr. Costa is revealing things that went on in executive session.
What happened?
For the lawyer.
Oh, but isn't, we, we did report, we, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Burke, we did report out in open session that we had engaged an attorney.
Yeah, I thought we were all set with that.
We had reported it out. We had reported that out, otherwise I wouldn't have brought it up.
All right.
But I hear you, Mrs. Costa. I think, I think we're, we're still in limbo as far as Cass Park is and we'll have to wait and see where we go.
Right. And March, I think March 8th with this meeting with the city council will, will give us some, some more answers on what we're kind of hindering on right now. But as of, as of right now, I think we should, you know, if, if Barry Field can be its own situation, then let it be its own situation. But as far as the design for Cass Park, I think we should kind of be a little bit more lenient to see what the plans exactly include.
Well, I don't know if I, you, maybe that's, lenient is not something I would say. I want to show me, show me that you can do it, that can fit what the athletic department and the school department require at Cass Park. Because if they can't be fit, for example, if you can't fit at all, then you're going to still need, where else are we going to go? We still have Barry Field. And that's going to be a question that we're going to be dealing with in terms of the use of the athletic fields, for sure. But like you said, we've got a lawyer that's looking, our attorney is looking into, looking into the situation and we'll hear more. And also on February 27th, we have a walkthrough plan at Barry Field. And hopefully we're not going to be in four feet of snow. Let's hope for that. But we, right, as we all shake our heads, that's going to be a very important day because I expect Mr. Henderson and Ms. Jodano and Dr. McGee will walk us through and walk through the, with the city council. The city council will be there to do that so they get to see what we see. You know, I ride by there and how about you? You ride by there, you don't see anything, but a lot of that activity is well in, into the, into the fields where all the activity is. It's, it's not just a matter of one game a week. There's a lot more that goes on. But again, we'll have a walkthrough and then we have a meeting on March 8th. So that's all, you know, are there any other comments that would like to be made at this point? I want to thank you all for, for those comments because they're very, very important. And we're all doing this with good heart and with, you know, and the way we feel about the city and we're all for the city and our kids, especially like Mr. Burke said, our mission is to provide for the education of our, of our students the best we can. And, and part of that is the athletic programs and the athletic fields. We have nothing else on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:34 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee will call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Thanks for being part of our meeting.